All right, so I'm going to call this special meeting of the Bethel Public Site and Building Commission to order at 7:01. And even though Kathy and I are in the municipal center, just the two of us, six feet away, 10 feet actually, we measured, we're going to dispense with the pledge because we can't see the flag. So we can't do that. But I'm going to do a brief roll call to make sure we know who's here because we do have some people on phones. And I can see all your heads. You probably can't see me very well because I'm like down here. And this is just a trial to see how this works in broadcasting from the municipal center. In the future, we may be home depending on what kind of meeting we have. So I see John Perna, and I see John Mentee is with us, but he's on his phone, I believe. And I see Dave Olson, who I believe may be on a phone. I see Gil on a phone. I'm just saying who I don't have photos for. And I see Bob Germanero on the computer. And I see Dino on the computer. And I don't know if Roy is there. If Roy, if you're on your phone, could you unmute and let us know? So I'm not hearing anything from Roy. I'm assuming he's not with us.
He's showing up on my screen as his iPad.
Oh, his iPad? He is? Okay.
Yeah.
Oh, there he is. Okay. I see it. Okay. And then I see Rich, and I see Joe Colada, and Geraldine, and I see Christine, and Bill Foster.
Terry just signed on.
Who did?
Terry.
Okay, Terry's here. Okay. I see Joe Costa, too. And then a couple of phones. So whoever's on the phone, I'm going to need you to unmute. I see Ken Hunt also, I believe, by phone because I don't see a photo.
Yes, I'm here with Jim Delaney.
Okay. And you're both on your phones?
No, we're here. We can see the screen.
Okay, we can't see you. That's okay. If you can figure out to turn on your video, we might be able to see you. Otherwise, and then there are three people on their phones. So if you could figure out how to unmute your phone and let me know. If you're just the public, that's okay. We don't need to know. But if you're part of our team, we need to know. Like, I don't know if Melanie's there. No, Melanie. Dave Olson's there twice. And then Dave Horvath. I don't know if Dave Horvath is here. Okay, well, I have a general idea of who's here. And being a special meeting, we are not, we didn't put public input in, so there's no place for public input. But I'm just going through the agenda, which I'm not going to share on the screen, so I hope you have it there either in front of you or you printed it. But I'll tell you each item as we go along. And most of you were on the Zoom meeting two weeks ago when we did the joint meeting with Board of Eds. So you kind of know how this works. You keep your microphone muted while everyone else, while different people are talking. And I'm sure that Geraldine and Joe Colada will be doing some screening.
Hello?
So who's that?
Roy.
Roy. Okay, so Roy, you're here, and now you can mute yourself so we don't get feedback.
Yep. Yep. Yep.
Robert Thomas. Robert, too. Nancy, could you hear me now?
I can hear you now. I just need you to mute your phone now so that we don't get feedback. Good. All right. Great. Somebody needs to mute.
Okay, good.
Yep, so go ahead and mute, Roy.
I should be now.
Yeah, but you're, yeah, you're not.
The issue is, is that Roy's on both his iPad and his phone.
Yeah. I shut, I shut off the iPad because I couldn't get it to, I couldn't get the video going on that. I just, I'm on my phone now. It should be, it should be just on my phone.
Yeah, it sounds much better.
Okay.
Okay, good.
All right.
There should be a little icon that says launch audio and then launch video. If you click both of those, it should come right up.
Yeah, I just shut it off because it was getting confusing. I just went on, went on my phone. So next time, I'll do that.
Okay, so let's just mute your, your microphone or mute yourself on your phone, Roy, and that'll stop the feedback.
Okay.
Thanks. Okay, so first thing we need to do is approve meeting minutes, which we didn't set it up so we can share it on the screen. So hopefully you reviewed all that. So I am going to make a motion that we approve the regular meeting minutes from Tuesday, March 10, 2020. And that's my motion, and I'm going to need a second. So to second, you're going to need to unmute yourself and say that.
I'll second that, Nancy.
Okay, I got it from Bob Germanero. Thank you, Bob. And as I said, Kathy sent these all out well in advance. You should have been able to review them. If you have any questions or anything that need to be clarified or changed, again, you're going to need to unmute and let us know. Or if you have any questions. Okay, so I don't see any questions coming in. We're going to have to take a vote. So I'm going to have to, I can see Perna and Bob and Dino. So you can raise your hands if you're in favor. And the rest of you are going to have to come on and unmute yourselves and let me know. So raise your hand if you're voting aye, please. So I got Bob Germanero, Perna, do you vote aye? Oh, Perna's got to abstain, correct?
It's me.
I got abstaining. I wasn't there last week.
Right, Dino has to abstain. John Mentee has to abstain, and I have to abstain. So I need Roy. I've got Bob Germanero. I need Roy.
Yes.
Okay, I need Dave Olson. And I need Gil. So you have to unmute your, figure out how to unmute your phone to... So Dave Olson and Gil, are you there? I don't see a microphone in the corner of there, and I don't see whether it's muted or unmuted. And Dave Horvath, I don't know, Dave Horvath? I'm going to take that as a unanimous for the people that were here. So now we have the joint meeting with the Board of Education. I'm sure they did their own minutes. The Board of Ed did their own minutes. We're doing ours. So I make a motion that we approve the meeting minutes, the special joint meeting with the Board of Education, Thursday, March 19, 2020, via Zoom. That's my motion, and I need a second.
Yeah, good.
So Dino, seconds. Thank you. And any questions, issues, et cetera with this? So Roy, Dave Olson, and John Perna would have to abstain. Everyone else, if you could vote, let me know.
Aye.
So, okay, good. Thank you. All right, moving on. So that's the minutes. Our old business, Rockwell and Johnson Schools. So we're going to get an update. And Geraldine, do you want to take over from now? And then I guess we'll go to Rizzo?
I would. I'd like to start. In addition to the regular report that we asked Ken to provide on ongoing progress on the construction projects, this week, we asked Rizzo to provide a report to you on, specifically on schedule, on what we were able to accelerate from future parts of the schedule now that the schools are unoccupied. And I, we did distribute that report, but I'd like Ken to start with, with that general overview, how we've been able to adjust the schedule to take advantage of having unoccupied buildings. And then, Ken, you can launch into what we're currently working through over the next week or so.
So for this report, prepared revised work schedules that will allow us to be able to be ready for if school is reoccupied. Now it's May 1. And because of that, there's limitations to going into certain areas to progress ahead of the current schedule. And then the other unknown factor that we have is our workforce that, you know, changes from time to time, dependent on the workers and if they have to go into quarantine.
Can I, can I just clarify one thing, Ken?
Sure.
This is Christine Carver. So the current date is not May 1. It is April 20, April 20th or April 22nd. That's what the governor has put forward. I did have a conference call today, and they said that they were going to try to let districts know around April 10th if they were going to come back for the year. So I just want to clarify those dates.
Okay, sure.
And I'll express what I've said, especially after just listening to the presidential briefing. I, there's, I just don't see any way that we're going to be back. It's just my opinion, based on where they're looking at the surge and kind of the long-term effects of it.
Okay, I appreciate that. So with that in mind, soon as that, we hear that news, we'll, you know, revamp the schedule so that, you know, we'll be totally resequencing all the work. And that's when we'll need, you know, help from everybody as far as, you know, the move and how we're going to start going into other areas that we didn't plan on going into until the summertime. So for Johnson School, right now, we're just getting ready to start the roofing on Phase 2A2. That's the existing building. And basically, we're, we have the materials on site, and we're ready to start April 3rd on Friday. And this originally was scheduled for, kitchen abatement took place March 23rd, and we weren't scheduled to go back, start in the whole kitchen till May. So we were able to get in there sooner now. We're going to keep going in the kitchen. The cafeteria, we put the conduit feeders in, and the, we're now into the music room, finishing that up. There's some demolition that took place in there. So that, that work is progressing. We're working on the teacher's parking lot drainage right now. And that work itself, there was not scheduled till June. So for right now, that's where we're looking at Johnson School. For Rockwell, we've started the roofing on Phase 2, which is the existing building, the second story. And we're, that wasn't scheduled until June, and we're doing that now. Gym abatement started on March 16th, and we had scheduled that for April 10th, the Easter Vacation week. And so that's, that started early. The kitchen started on March 27th, and that work wasn't scheduled until May. So we have a jump on some areas, and if we do get the remainder of the school, we'll be going all over the place. So I can keep going with the three-week look aheads, if that's what you'd like. All right. I'm going to go with Johnson. And so for Johnson, right now, we're, we're working the masonry for the, for the gym addition. We're working installing ductwork in the, in the gym. And all of the electrical roughing has taken place. And we've, we have been putting slabs in place, and we have another slab that's getting ready for the, the gym platform. And that's for the gym. We did take down the pedestrian walkway out to the recess area. So that's going to allow us to start that drainage in that area. For the fifth grade addition, we're finishing up the sun shades on the outside of the curtain wall windows. The, we're doing the media center ceiling, and we're going into the STEM room area and doing that ceiling as well. Shade pockets are going to be starting. And that's what we have left for the, for the fifth grade addition. And we have for the second floor classroom that we got the elevator that's getting ready for inspection on the ninth, which is Thursday. And we, demolition pretty close to 100% on the second floor. And we're going to start looking to get the mechanicals going in that, in those areas. And that includes the rooftop frames. So there's, there's a little bit of work we have to do to the structure. We'll be installing roof drains, and the roof is going to be installed. So that's, that's it right now for the, for Johnson. And for, for Rockwell. So right now, the biggest area of work is, is the roofing. And that, we're, we're doing that along with the controls work and startup. They were, they started up RTU 2 today. So they're continuing on the startup of the mechanical equipment to get that all ready for the second floor. We were do, we're doing some, the gym floor demo took place in the abatement for the tar paper. And then we found some mastic on the floor that we had to abate as well. So that took an extra week. And we're looking to get clearances so we can take down the containments and start the demolition in the gym. We've started the kitchen MEP disconnects and demolition. And we're doing the exterior wall panel zegertz. So panels that around stair one and, and different areas around the building. And the, the gym platform addition is pretty close to being completed. There's a small section of brick that he asked to complete. He's not quite there yet. Any questions?
Ken, I have one question, just because I haven't been there since last week. Is, is there, is the mill, is the mill work in the library going in, in that second area? You know, the main part that was waiting for the ceilings and all those other pieces?
It's there, but it hasn't gone in yet because they're putting up the high ceiling.
So Ken, I have a question, too. Actually, just clarification, and it's Nancy because you can't see me. I'm far away. So in going along with the schedule, right now, you're, you're able to maintain schedule in a way, but also do some extra stuff. But you can't really go full force on whatever you need to do because you have to kind of, sort of pretend like students might come back at some point.
Correct.
Okay. And then once we get a change of date, if we do, you'll create a different schedule?
Absolutely. Then, then we'll go through everything, and it'll definitely change our approach.
And then, this is Jim Delaney. There are things that if, depending on the level of confidence that students aren't coming back, that we could do now that would be very helpful because of what will change if school is closed. A lot of the sequencing will change. Some of that has to do with, Bob's already helped us out, and STB's helped us out as far as turning off the heat over at Johnson. Things like that. Coming to that decision with domestic water is another decision that if they're genuinely not going to come back, the earlier we can make those calls, the more impact they'll have on the schedule.
Just to be clear, we don't make the call. The governor makes the call. And, and, but we'll know. The tent is next week, I believe, correct? We're getting close.
Yeah.
Yeah, finally.
Yeah, so hopefully they keep their word and they do tell us then. But if they float the date out there, they're likely going to tell us.
All right. And I'm, what I'm seeing is, I can't, I haven't heard anything specific from either John Mentee or Gil, who are still up there, or Dave Olson. So if they have questions, I don't really know how to get them to sort of change whatever they've got going on there and ask questions.
It's John. I did have a question.
Okay.
And I apologize, I missed the last meeting. But was there an issue with the HVAC and a rework due to our building department?
Not the building department, John. There was a, there was an issue with how the, the units function and brought fresh air into the space.
Okay.
The subcontractor feels as though that's a change. The designer doesn't, but he's moving forward with, with the rework. But yeah, that was, that was an issue when we were trying to get Johnson up and running.
So has that been resolved?
Yes. Yes.
Oh, excellent. Great. Thanks.
Any other questions for Ken or Jim?
I'm good.
Anything else? So that's our construction schedule update.
There, the only other thing I wanted to touch on were, were the letters that Rizzo provided as a notification of potential delay. So we did circulate copies of both of those letters, one for each school, to everyone. Jim, I don't know if you want to say anything about that. I will just say that this is not something that requires action by the building committee. This is a contractual obligation that the contractor has to provide notice within a certain period of time to the owner if there's a potential, if there's any potential for a future delay. So this is not a declaration that there is a delay. There is no cost implication or time implication at this time. This is a, a notification required by contract that we will file away and, and hopefully not have to utilize at a later date, since it looks like we actually are able to accelerate and resequence construction rather than have a delay from the event. But in the event that there were, there was a manpower shortage or supplier delay, this is part of a notification period.
Correct. What, what we're running into now, in particular, the Mason, who does a lot of work in New York City, we have a problem getting manpower from him because many of his crews are quarantined. We've had roofers where portions of their crew have had to be quarantined. So that seems to be, you know, we heard about one a week ago. Now it seems to be every day, there seems to be something along those lines. The other concern is on the supply chain side, simple things, the things that, you know, ordered well in advance are now having trouble getting to the job site. So I'm sure there are going to be things like that that we have to face, and maybe some things we haven't seen coming. But that seems to be what we're facing now, where it's just, it's just manpower issues at this point.
And along with that, on the owner's side, we've had two owner vendors notify us that they're, they're either suspending work or, or will have some slowdown in their work. E Plus, who has been supplying the equipment for the network connectivity and has been installing all the equipment in the MERS, has, they're suspending just based on a company policy that they don't feel that they can safely work in the spaces. And ESC, who was the lead installer for the AV equipment, notified us today that they're, one of their installers that was working on our project has been quarantined, and so they will not have the manpower to continue to provide AV installation services. In terms of the, the network installation, I think David Airy from, from IT has a pretty good handle on what has and has not been able to be accomplished, and there isn't anything there that would hold up any related construction work. I'm still trying to nail down whether the ESC AV equipment install has any impact on the project. But it looks like they're at a point between phases where they were just hanging, you know, hanging visual display boards and things like that. So we don't really think that there's an impact at this point on those two vendors.
Good.
Geraldine?
Yep.
Is there wiring infrastructure in place? Because that's kind of what Dave is, you know, worried about.
Right. So the AV vendor had, I think, was completed with their, with their wiring and their above ceiling work. And that's really what we're trying to check on, to make sure that there's nothing that's going to hold up, not so much the rest of the IT installation, but that might hold up any of the construction, closing up ceilings or anything. But we believe that they're done, everything in these phases, so we have a little bit of time there. And I know David's been doing some of the installation of the network equipment himself, just, just to keep things moving. So we don't have, I think, we don't have wireless capability at Johnson, or I think it was Johnson. But, but they're, but they've got some network connectivity, and they're able to, to work through it as long as school doesn't come back in session. Are there any other questions about delay possibilities?
Geraldine, do you need confirmation from Dave regarding the status?
No, we're in, we've been in touch. And honestly, the, the notification from ESC just came through, I think, this afternoon. So it's pretty, it's pretty new. He just, I think he just hasn't had an opportunity to respond to the question yet.
I just think that it's not unreasonable that we have to expect as a committee. I mean, we're, we're renovating a brand-new elementary school right now. We just got notice this week, and all our mill work is on hold. They closed the factory where they were doing all our mill work, which was not even in the state of Connecticut. You know, we just all have to keep an open mind. There's, there's, we're dealing with something that nobody's ever dealt with before, you know?
Yep. It's, I think it's going to change daily. You know, they, you might find that we're, we're moving along at a good clip, and then suddenly we come to a screeching halt with one section. So we're just going to have to keep on top of it. And I'm sure Ken, Jim, and Geraldine and all will be keeping on top of everything.
So it also leads me into the next thing on the agenda, which is to report on the FFD installations for Phase 1 at both buildings. And in fact, we did have, of the furniture that was delivered to Rockwell last week, there was, it was all done except for one vendor who had already shut down their, their facility. So they have our furniture, but they are not, they didn't load it into the building. So we'll be looking for, we're, we're working with them closely to figure out exactly when they are going to start work up again. And if we do have schools starting on the 20th, we're prioritizing the fact that we're going to need some of their furniture in, in at Rockwell. But other than that, all of the furniture that was scheduled to be delivered at Rockwell was last week. There were, there are a couple of pieces that were damaged that we are following up on that are going to be replaced. There were a couple of carts at Johnson from the initial delivery there that were damaged that are coming in this week. So those, those items are continuing to be taken care of. We also, with the help of the school custodial staff, were able to move all the, all the teacher and classroom contents. and classroom contents at Rockwell from the various areas up into the second floor and then moving the first grade out into the portables. The custodians helped out tremendously by packing it all up in the absence of teachers. And then the movers completed those, those moves last Wednesday and Thursday, enabling us to clear out areas for Rizzo to continue on with the subsequent phases.
So Carolyn, it looks like the moves that were supposed to happen in mid to late March, without all this, you know, Corona stuff before all that started and all the close down happened, were pretty much on schedule to get finished. Obviously, the one Johnson was delayed, but that delayed date was pretty much kept to and the same with Rockwell.
That's correct. Both of the initial first or current phases at both Johnson and Rockwell are completed in terms of furniture installation and moving, moving items into those spaces. And, and in a lot of rooms where we've consolidated the furniture and the boxes and, you know, trying to protect them as construction proceeds in other areas of the building.
Thanks.
So barring any question, any other questions on that progress? The next thing on the agenda is to review proposed change orders. I am going to try to share my screen again with the change order, the PCO log. So at Johnson, at Johnson, we have three, we submitted to you all three potential change orders. I'm going to start with the, with the biggest one. PCO 4 is revised by Ferguson based on lengthy negotiations between Rizzo and Ferguson. This one, actually, I have not had a chance to really review the new quantities, so I'm not asking for action on this one today, I just wanted everyone to be aware of it. This has come down significantly, I think that this change order started at 228,000, maybe it was more. And there has been a lot of back and forth about, about the cost and the quantities involved here. Now, I'm going to ask Joe Calata to weigh in because of course, whenever we get a potential change order, we ask the design team to review and comment. And even though we are not going to, even though I'm not asking for action tonight based on a complete review by myself, I would like the architects to weigh in on the reasonableness of this change order.
Right, so we are still maintaining that this change order is part of the base contract and the routing of the conduits through the building is the responsibility of the contractor.
So as you recall, this has to do with the fact that during coordination, when the electrical feeder route was set, it would, it's been maintained by Ferguson that the new route was not what they had estimated during bidding and that they are therefore owed additional money for the different routing and additional materials involved in this, this alternate routing of electrical feeders. We've talked about this before. I do want to go back and look at the quantities again before asking for action, but if anyone has any comment at this point, be welcome to discuss it.
I do. Are these the main four inch feeders?
It's that rack?
Yes.
That infamous rack?
How would that not be on the drawing? Or if it is on the drawing, how would it not be in a place that they couldn't do it? Now, we're not talking small conduits, we're talking feeders. That's what I call base building. That is, that should not be in a gray area on the print. And it shouldn't be responsible for the contractor. You know, we're not, we're not talking about a two inch conduit going to a sub panel, we're talking feeds, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. So I strongly, and I'm going to say again, because we, we've been talking about this for months, and I strongly disagree that it's on to the contractor. Okay? You draw it into the print and it should be able to fit wherever you draw it in. If it doesn't fit, it's not the contractor's fault.
John, the coordination of the mechanical, electrical, plumbing, fire protection trades are the responsibility of the contractors. And if we drew these conduits in and they disagreed with any of it, you would probably be seeing a much larger change order. So so they have to get from point A to point B and they have any path that they have available through MEP coordination.
So hey, hey Joe, on that, what is shown on the base prints along that lines? Is it just a footnote per se? Or is there actual, is that, is that area shown, you know, start out that, that's where that's going to be in that area?
I believe it's, it's not shown. I'd have to look into it further, I haven't actually confirmed that.
If you could do a little research, if you could do a little research on that, you know, I think I hear both sides of the argument, but I, I think that I'd like you to really research how it was noted on the plans, Joe.
Okay.
Okay, because you know, you know, I, I, I understand both ways, but I gotta think that there was, there was some designation there on those prints.
There is information on the documents telling them how they are, what the requirements for running the conduits are.
I, I'd like to have you do some research.
I could get specific information, general notes, spec sections, details, risa diagrams, all that stuff. It's all shown in that information.
I think that'd be good. I think that'd be good for even John and myself, just to, you know, even if you could just shoot those things over to us, I wouldn't even mind taking a look at it too, just to get a little bit of interpretation of, of, you know, how you did footnote it.
Okay, I will get that information through DTC.
And I agree, because I think, I think the question is how to, is to verify, how to verify the assumption that the electrician might have made during bidding versus the actual conditions under which he had to route the conduit in the field. And if we can verify that, that there was an assumption that is, is now different, that would be helpful in, in understanding the reasonableness of the, of the change.
Correct, correct, that's exactly my opinion too.
I have one question. With this new path they took going through the cafeteria, are they going to, or do we have to pay separately to have that stuff boxed in? Because it's, it's just hanging out there in the middle of a occupied space and it's going to look like hell. Is that, is that an additional change order to design something to cover all that up? You have a large junction box with four or five large LBs? It's not something that I know Dr. Carver's not going to want seeing in the cafeteria.
Yeah, so Bob, the, the feeders in the cafeteria themselves are up at the ceiling, so they're hidden by clouds, but the junction box.
No, I know, the junction box is along the wall and we did extend the soffit down to enclose that. What, did you do that?
The, the junction box that's on the wall in the cafeteria, we did modify the soffit that was there to enclose that.
Okay, so that's not going to be seen?
That will not be seen. The, the one in the music room, however, we did leave exposed. So that would be painted out to match the wall.
Beautiful.
Joe, was it assumed that the, all those feeders and everything were supposed to go down the hallway with all the other sprinklers and duct work?
That's, that's with the contractor.
Was that the original idea?
That's what the contractor assumed that they could go down the corridor, is what I've been told.
And, and when they got to the, to the actual work, they figured out that everything was going to fit in those corridors, otherwise you'd be bending over, walking down the corridor, is that right?
Correct.
Yeah.
So on the mechanical drawing showed all the duct work that was in the corridors, the corridor height was indicated, the section showed the building height and plumbing lines running down the corridor, so there was no room for electrical conduits, especially a one giant rack that the electrician wanted to run down the corridor would never affect fit.
Carolyn, what was the difference? You said that originally was 328, what was, what's the bottom line number they're, they're submitting now?
125.
Well, that's a lot different.
It's a lot different, but because, but I, but like I said, I still want to look at some of the quantities more, more closely because it's, it really is a matter of what did they have to run where? And, and we just want to verify that the quantities of piping are, are actually as much as, as they're claiming. Because as far as I'm concerned, there's, you know, the labor is not that big a deal, they were running, they were running conduit anyways, right? So
Right.
So there's a little bit of, I mean, there's a little bit of extra work based on the routing that they are taking, but that, those are the kind of things that we want to verify before we say, yeah, absolutely, we're, we're recommending this change order be adopted.
Now, wouldn't a BIM caught this?
Seems like.
Right? No?
So the, the BIM modeling is done with the court, with the field coordination. I mean, all of the trades are, we're essentially trying to grab real estate for their, for their work. So the BIM clash detection wasn't done ahead of time. Correct me if I'm wrong, Joe.
Well, we, we did clash detection on the information that was modeled.
So now down to this detail?
No, so the electricians don't typically model all the conduits and wiring devices into their model. So they, they do the lighting, they do receptacles, they do electrical panels, all that stuff is modeled, but all the conduits throughout the building are not typically modeled.
So Joe, why, I, I don't know anything about this, but why not? You, they know it's a tight space, like why don't they do that?
I am not sure, I think that's industry standard for electricians. Or electrical.
This is a totally different thing, this is the main power.
Right.
This is not branch circuitry. This is the main, your main feeders. It's not a sub panel, it's the main power to the wing of the building. You can't tell me that, that's.
It's part of the core, it's part of the core, like plumbing, like septic.
Right. Exactly.
Well, I'll reach back out to my electrical consultant and get a response on how they typically do their drawings.
You know, in the long run, it was easier for the electrician to move his conduits rather than putting duct work down the lunchroom and stuff like that. So it was
Right.
the evil of the, the beast, you know, that the electrician got pushed out of the corridor into a different location, sounds like.
They're usually last in, so.
Yeah, I, I agree with you, Rich, and you know, even on the installation of the, you know, the new feeders, I, I kind of think, Carolyn, I, I think that from what I was understanding, that was a flexible feeder type thing, so it was probably easier to put in than the, than the rigid.
Yeah, they had, they had four, four lines that they, they did that way, to feed the addition.
Right.
And all four were four inch, right?
I'm not sure what size they were, I think, were they four inch, the flexible ones?
All four of them.
Right, so those ran down the corridor, but they were split off from the giant rack that Ferguson proposed. And they were able to fit down the corridor. So part of this is the way that Ferguson decided that they wanted to run the rack as well, they wanted to run it as one giant rack through the entire building.
Right, which, which is simply, you know, I, I don't think that's a realistic assumption, knowing what was up in those ceilings to start with.
Right, right.
Okay, you know, in defense of, of Joe and the, on the electrical, you know, hey, everyone knew that was tight space there, everyone.
I also think we need to take into consideration if for concealment or their, parts of their design, MEP design team were to provide drawings and the electrician didn't agree that it could go that way or should go that way, then we'd be in a bind also. I, I think that it is one of the things that can be considered obviously part of coordination and kind of up to the, the contractor to figure out the best way to do it. And Carolyn, you're going to do some more checking, Joe's going to get some information that was asked for, and does anybody else have any other part of this that they need to get information on so we can look into this further and make a decision at another time?
I, I think where you're going, Nancy, is the right way, so I think, you know, let's, let's just research, you know, after, after all the information comes back, I think we'll have a better handle.
Yes. So Carolyn, you, Carolyn and Joe have a little work to do. What's next, Carolyn?
PCO 34, so this is for window limit stops at all of the wind, at all, at the first floor, the first floor windows. So the base building contract required window limit stops at all windows that were higher than 16 feet above the outside grade, which essentially is the second floor. But the, this, the, the school district asked us to add window limit stops also at all the first floor windows, all of the new windows are operable. This will limit the window openings to about four inches, so both for safety from kids on the inside getting out and also security in the event that windows are open, people from the outside can't get in. This was a, we're recommending that this be adapted by the, by the commission. I think the, the cost breakdown was about $117 a window, looked reasonable to all of us and as a request from the district, we wanted to support it.
I agree, that's a safety issue.
All right.
I agree.
So I'm going to make a motion if, if we need to discuss this further, I believe I, I have it on my screen so I can do that. So this is for Johnson still, correct?
Correct.
So I make a motion that we approve PCO number 34 for Johnson School, first floor window limit stoppers in the amount of $4,789.04. I need a second.
I'll second that. Roy, second it.
Okay, that's Roy, and any other discussion on this?
No.
I just have a question, though, this, so this wasn't included originally, the second floor was included but not the first floor, is that correct? And so this wasn't actually a code issue or anything, but something obviously for safety and all of the students?
Right, it's not a code issue for the first floor windows, but
Okay.
recommended.
I have a question, I have a question. What about the Rockwell School? Is this going to be the same situation?
We're about to review the same thing at Rock, when I go through Rockwell.
Okay, alright.
Any other questions on this change order? So let's vote, all in favor, aye, I can't see everybody.
Aye.
Okay. Does anybody disagree or is anybody opposed? Okay, so motion carries and that obviously is going to be part of some change order thing that you're going to have to put together to go to Matt.
That's correct. The last one for Johnson is PCO 35, so when Rizzo arrived on the second floor of the old building at Johnson, they discovered a remaining nine by 16 foot, or four by 16 foot tack board still in the old media center. We know that all the tack boards have glue dubs behind them that contain asbestos, needs to be remediated. We know that all the tack boards have glue dubs behind them that contain asbestos, need is to be remediated. And unfortunately, because they have to set up a containment for that one single area, the cost of removing this leftover board that was not listed in the design documents nor discovered previously is seven thousand nine hundred and seventy-four dollars and seventy-five cents. Again, it's something we have to do. It's an environmental contingency item. And at Johnson, we do have a hundred and twenty-two thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars left in the environmental contingency. So we are recommending adoption of this PCO.
I agree with the change order.
Okay, I'm gonna, I'll make a motion so we can do it and discuss it if needed. So I make a motion that we approve for Johnson PCO number thirty-five.
Second it.
In the amount of seven thousand nine hundred and seventy-four dollars and seventy-five cents, additional media center board removal. So that was that John Perna that seconded?
Yeah. Yes.
And any other discussion or question? I'm assuming it'll come out of our environmental contingency.
That's correct.
Was this tech, was this tack board hidden or behind something?
So, um, two things. One, the, the hazardous materials report that was included in the bid documents had a table in it that quantified how many tack boards or marker boards there were in the building. We had previously exceeded that number that was in the bid quantity by, I think, four or five boards. So a previous change order had come through for those additional boards. So, so this is an additional board that wasn't quantified in the drawings. And then it was hidden because we were using that area of the old media center to store things in prior to moving into the fifth, the new fifth grade classroom addition. So even when earlier abatement was going on, a lot of the materials from the media center were being stored in that room, essentially hiding that area of the room from prior containment. Would have been the same cost at any point because that was the only thing within that room that needed to be contained and abated.
Alright, thank you for the clarification.
Yep.
Any other questions on this PCO thirty-five?
No, it's pretty straightforward.
Yep, okay, so hearing done, let's take a vote, all in favor. Aye. Aye. Is anybody against it or opposed? Okay, so that motion carries. That'll come out of our environmental contingency.
Correct.
And is that it for Johnson?
That's it for Johnson, so.
Does anybody have any questions on the PCO log for now? I know, I see the one outstanding is the feeders, which we have to deal with.
Correct.
Okay.
There is at the bottom, of course, of, of every PCO log, you'll see a list of the PCOs that we have, that have been submitted to us, but that we are either reviewing with the design team or have sent back to the contractor for rework. So you can always see what we're negotiating before we bring it, before we bring PCOs to you for comment and approval. Alright, so at Rockwell, we have, we have, we presented five PCOs. But again, one of them I sent along to you for review prior to getting a comment back from Perkins Eastman. So PCO twenty-four to modify radiant ceiling panels, we have actually sent back to the construction manager. And we'll be doing some further work on that, negotiating either the cost or whether that's even a valid PCO at all. So we're going to skip over that one for today. And move right to PCO twenty-seven, which as Bob pointed out, is the same idea as at Johnson. We wanted to install window limit stops on all of the first floor windows. Only the second floor was in the base bid. At, at Rockwell, there are not as many windows to install them in. And so this change order is for two thousand eight hundred and thirty-nine dollars and twenty-four cents.
I'll make a motion that we approve that one.
I'll second that.
Okay, so was that, that was Roy making the motion, correct?
Right.
Yeah, that's correct.
And who was seconding, who seconded?
Bob.
Okay, Bob, and the amount is two thousand eight hundred and thirty-nine dollars and twenty-four cents. Just making sure Kathy gets it. Because I don't have paper copies of everything right here. I'm just going off mine. Kathy does, but I don't. Going off my computer. So are there any questions? Obviously not, because we pretty much had this explained last time, but if there are any questions, please jump in. Okay, if not, we'll take a vote, all in favor. Aye?
Aye.
Aye, aye, aye. Okay, anybody against? Okay, so we're good with that one. Let's go back to.
The next PCO is PCO twenty-nine. This is to provide, provide a light fixture and a receptacle at the top of the elevator shaft. My understanding is that until, the reason that this is a change is that until we actually have an elevator vendor on board, and it could have been any one of a number of elevator vendors, the, their exact requirements within the shaft are not known. So this is a requirement that Otis had. I believe this work has actually already been done. And it is, it is in the amount of four thousand nine hundred and eighty dollars and forty-eight cents. So that's for wiring, light fixture, the connection to the panel. And, and it's pretty much a requirement, so we're asking you to accept this, this PCO.
Make a motion, we approve?
Second.
Second from Dino. Any questions on this?
Geraldine, do you think that's a reasonable price for that?
Yes, yes, this was reviewed both by us and by, I, I think Perkins Eastman sent it on to DTC. So the electrical engineer actually specified what, what circuit, what panel and the capacity that was needed for the, for the work.
Rich, again, if this was a requirement, why wasn't in the bid documents?
It is possible that a different elevator manufacturer might not have required this. And that's why it's not, it, it just, it's not specified in the elevator specification as part of the package that the elevator vendor requires from the contractor.
I find it hard to believe it's not code. The elevator company works on the top of the car. How would they see inside the elevator shaft or plug anything in on the top of the car? So it's, it's a very common that elevator company comes in. They put the elevator in manual, they stand on top of the car for inspections. How could it not be required to have a light in the elevator shaft?
I've, I've seen them on top of the, the car itself and the light is right on top of the car and the plug is right that, the car too, for servicing. But, you know. It seems like it should have been in the bid specs for.
Yeah. I'd like to see, I'd like to see the code.
So it's, my understanding is not code, it's a requirement of the actual elevator installer. And so if the elevator installer is requiring it and they're also requiring it for when they come to do maintenance, it's not, as Geraldine was saying, I think it's not specifically code, but a requirement of that installer. If we had a different elevator, they may not have required it.
And what I'm saying is, I find it hard to believe it's not code. How could you have somebody working in elevator shaft with no light and no plug?
National Electrical Code requires it in a confined space like that. I can't see that being any different.
Yeah. You can't expect the elevator guy to work in a dark shaft. Should have been on the drawings. I want to see what the code is.
So, if, so in order to go further with this, I'm going to make a motion so we can discuss it further and then, and go from there. So, so who made the motion? Dino? Alright, so we have a, a motion on the floor. John Perna, you're saying you want to see the code.
Yeah. Yeah, whether, like Richie's saying, whether it's on the top of the car or it's on the ceiling of the shaft, you can't tell me the code doesn't require a light and a plug in an elevator shaft. There's no possible way.
Geraldine or Joe Colada, do you have any input on that?
Not immediately, but we can certainly research that and find out. I think the only possibility that comes to my mind is that if, if a light on top of the cab were to come as part of the elevator, then you wouldn't need a separate light within the shaft. That's the only reason I can think of where there, it, it might not be part of a code for an elevator shaft. But we can, but we'll certainly look into that. That's easy enough to, to, to document.
A confined space normally has a set of redundancies. So you may have one built in the shaft and one on the vehicle itself, but I'll let, I'll let you guys research that.
So we can bring that information.
It might be something to look into for forty-eight hundred dollars.
And, and is this in both schools too?
Uh, it will be in both schools. We don't have the cost at, at, I don't know why we don't have the cost at Johnson, but I don't have a, I don't have a change order for Johnson yet. This is for Rockwell. Oh, because they're still building the elevator and that's, that's why.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, so since we have a motion on the floor, can we agree to table it for now? Yeah? So some reason.
I agree.
Okay. Okay, so we're going to table that.
Okay, then PCO thirty-one is for an access panel in the kiln room. There are, there was a chase built to, to conceal isolation valves and piping within the kiln, the kiln storage room, the separate, the kiln room that's separate from the art room. Those valves require access and for six hundred and seventy-seven dollars and twenty-four cents, you get an access panel in that chase.
I make a motion, we accept it.
Second.
With Dino and Roy seconding, any other questions on that? So we'll move that along, all in favor. Aye?
Aye. Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay, so that's done.
So the last one at Rockwell is PCO thirty-two. This is a change order from the demolition contractor to do all of the CMU demolition, cut all of the holes in all of the walls that were required for conduit installation of the primary feed at Rockwell, where again, we changed the location from a corridor into, into a series of rooms where now chased, you know, access had to be cut in CMU walls through all of the intervening walls. So this is for the demolition work associated with that electrical routing. And because it's Rockwell, of course, all the CMU has PCB paint on it. So this PCO is for fifty-three thousand four hundred and seventy-five dollars and forty-one cents, some of which is abatement and some of which is, is just CMU demolition for electrical.
So this is related to the four, what we think are the four four-inch conduits. The mysterious conduits feeds.
Sorry, Kelly, I could jump off. No.
Does this mean this, we're going to put this on hold until further investigation?
The feeders were Johnson.
Correct. That's correct. So, yes, the feeders, the, the previous discussion was about Johnson. So at Rockwell, we have a similar situation where the feeders, instead of running through the corridor, where we wouldn't have to do this demolition, were moved to run through the rooms just off the corridor.
So that required demolition through all the CMUs. Then as Geraldine said, this is partially demolition and partially abatement because there's PCB in all the walls on the paint, in all the paint at Rockwell. It's a big chunk of money. And if some of it's abatement, how do we, is it broken out as to, I'm looking down through here?
You know, it's probably not. We would put all of this towards the environmental contingency because there's no way to, the only way to abate the paint on the CMU block, the CMU unit and the CMU units is to remove them and dispose of them as hazardous waste. So essentially the entire exercise is environmental.
And what was the reason for not going down the hallway? So, the reason for not.
Essentially the same. It's essentially the same as at Johnson. The, the decision during coordination, there was a decision made during coordination to run the electrical feeders, not through the corridor.
Because of elevation.
Because, because of the amount of, yeah, because of either the elevation of the ceiling or because there just wasn't enough room in the existing space in the corridors.
Okay, so we did this here, why is the school, other school any different?
The other discussion was about the electrical work. This is about the demolition, this is about demolition to enable.
For the feeds, but for the feeds, right?
Correct.
For the electrical feeds.
Correct.
Yeah, correct, yeah.
So it's, so in my mind, it's clearly a change to the demolition contractor. When they bid the job, they had no idea they were going to be cutting holes in all the walls. If you looked at the change order that was posted on the shared drive, there actually, there's photos of every wall that they cut through. So, so this is clearly a change to the demolition contractor. But I think, Joe Colada, do you want to make a comment on this as well, since I am noted as not being supported by the architect?
Yeah, so in, in the specifications, each contractor's required to do their own cutting and patching for their work. So this, we would consider a convenience to the electrical contractor for the demo contractor and then therefore the abatement contractor to do this work to cut the holes for the, the path that the electrical contractor decided to take through the building. So they could have split it up or done what they did at Johnson where they ran some flex cable down the corridor or they, they could have chosen a different path or a smaller path or split it up more where it could have been cores or other things. So there was other options for them to do. But again, they decided to run the rack because it's in their best interest to run it together down through each wall.
Was there any extra for the electrical contractor to do that? Or did he, did he, did we get a credit for him because he didn't have to, you know, squeeze everything in on the hallway?
I could, the size of the electrician's rack didn't change. The difference between these two jobs is for Rockwell, he didn't have to go vertical. He didn't make vertical changes in this rack, running up vertical and then running across the cafeteria like it is at Johnson. In this case, he stayed on the same plane. So there's really, you know, once those, the holes in the walls are broken, there's no change as far as the electrician's concerned with, with this, running of his conduit.
It, it seems to me though, with the electrical, I mean, it, it, it's, again, it's all very similar to the, to the Johnson situation. It's almost like the electrical contractor kind of, you know, passing off. He, he's going the easiest way possible, which opened up the whole problem with, you know, going through the CMU. So, you know, whether, whether we ended up changing it to different conduits and different electrical, effectively he forced us into the same thing here. I mean, it just so happens that it didn't come back as an electrical increase, but it's, you know, it's, it's demo and everything else. I mean, effectively, it's still the same thing. You know, it goes back. I think we got to go back and look at the specs and the plans that Joe, and what we talked about before. Because to me, you know, we're, we're grouping it all in this, you know, in my mind, we're grouping it all in the same group. I mean, you know, he should have had these things back where original location was set up to be. You know, maybe he didn't like it, but you know, you know, he just arbitrarily, and I don't know if it was arbitrarily, moved himself over into something else and just started demoing walls.
Was there any conversation that he owned that to begin with? Because he was, they were supposed to be responsible for cutting and patching. So it seems like, you know, Joe had mentioned he's responsible for it. But was there a discussion with Rizzo or with the architect or anybody on that?
He's not responsible for the cutting and patching of the PCB block. That doesn't fall under the electrician. Cutting and patching would be a typical requirement in a, in a contract where you don't have abatement to do when you're making your holes for whether it's an electrician.
So in your opinion, he's not responsible for the removal of the block?
In, in the case of Rockwell, yes.
Yeah, thank you.
Geraldine, how's our timing on submitting this change order and the one for Johnson that relates directly or indirectly to the?
So the work at Johnson is still ongoing, so there's, there isn't a timing issue there. On this one, the work was done. On this one, the work was done in, um, December. So we still have time to consider it, yes.
How much, sufficient time to consider?
Yes.
Yes. Okay.
Well, I wouldn't delay it indefinitely, but I think if, um, if, if further discussion or further information is needed to make a decision at the next meeting.
Okay.
We can do that. I just, and it, yeah, yeah.
That's fair. I just don't wanna miss the.
Yep.
Forty-five percent reimbursement.
Yep.
Okay, so what specific information are people looking for on this in order to make a, a more informed decision?
I know. My rec, my recommendation is we, we have the same that we were talking about as far as the Johnson, uh, you know, the discussion. You know, I think Joe would like to really research both ends. I mean, this looked like, you know, kind of an easy way out was just to move over and start breaking through blocks. You know, again, what's shown on the documents and, and, you know, what did the documents require?
Well, who gave the, um, the electrician the, uh, go ahead to go down through that, uh, the classrooms and remove that, have that block removed?
Yeah, that's, that's kinda my question also, right?
Coordination, seeing what it would do to the ceiling in the corridor. There was no way for the, that conduit to fit in the corridor at the school.
I mean, you know, I'm not questioning, maybe that was the most cost-effective way. It's just, you know, I'm just trying to figure out how it all comes out in the change order at this point.
Happy to review, do whatever you're looking for.
Okay, so. So we're gonna get some more information together?
So.
That's what I'd like to.
In terms of what was shown on the bid documents, is that what we're looking for?
Yes. That, that's what I'd like to see, yes. And, and the plans, what's shown in the plans.
Right.
You know, Joe had mentioned that, uh, the electrician was responsible for, for cutting and patching. Well, this is a lot more than just cutting and patching. I mean.
Yeah.
They went down through a dozen walls, I think, wasn't it?
Six or eight, yep.
Yeah, Rich, I agree. This is just moving the whole thing just totally outside of that area and to say, we're not going there, we're just gonna move it over ten feet and go, go a different way. And on that, that, you know, all of a sudden, you, you open up another can of worms.
I got a suggestion. Let's take the, how much is it? Fifty-three thousand?
Yep.
And deduct it to their change order for the other school. And we'll call it even. How's that sound?
Carolyn will check into that.
Yeah. Let me, let me see if I can make the math work.
Yeah.
Okay, so, so we did not have a, a motion on this, so we'll table it and get some more information. We'll talk about it in our next meeting.
Okay.
Okay.
Good, thank you.
All right, that's it for construction, um, proposed change orders. We do have on the technology side, a request for an additional expenditure. I am not a technology person, so I will just explain that the, um, switches in the techno, in the IT rooms required additional power cords at both schools. Um, and yet, this is for J, at Johnson, it is an additional request of a hundred and five dollars and sixty-four cents. And there is a similar quote from E-plus for Rockwell in the amount of sixty-one dollars and sixteen cents. And, um, so we're requesting, these are just quotes. We're requesting, uh, an approval to go ahead and procure those power cords and then we'll bring you the invoices when they actually arrive.
So you need, you need a vote and motions and vote from us to approve?
I think so, um, yeah. It's a, it's sort of a, a pre-look at a change that is coming. And if you make the change here on, on the quotation, then we can just approve the invoices when they come through.
So I'll make a motion, uh, I'll make a motion that we approve the, uh, quote for, from E-plus for, I'm looking for which school.
It doesn't say, but this is for Johnson.
They're both for Johnson.
No, this, this one that's on the screen currently is for Johnson, a hundred and five dollars and sixty-four cents.
Okay, so, so that's.
And second one for Rockwell.
Okay, so the first one I, I do have up, um, so from E-plus, a quote for additional power cord for Johnson School, uh, in the amount of a hundred and five dollars and sixty-four cents. That's my motion.
I'll second it.
Uh, Bob seconded it. Um, any questions about this? So let's vote, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Do we have any opposition? And then the other one for Rockwell, I make a motion that we approve the quote from E-plus for additional power cord, um, in the amount of sixty-one dollars and sixteen cents. That's my motion, I do second.
Second.
Yeah, Dino seconds. Um, any other questions about this? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That, that carries. And what's next, Carolyn?
So the next thing, we have an additional request from Perkins, Perkins Eastman for, um, additional fee to continue with construction administration on the project. And I suspect that's why Joe Costa's on the phone. So if, uh, either Joe Colada or Joe Costa would like to present this. Uh, we did circulate their proposal to everybody as part of the advanced package. I won't bother to bring it up on the screen.
I mean, I can start the discussion and let you know how we got to this point and then Joe Colada can jump in and continue the discussion. But basically, this is a, a condition where we had anticipated a certain number of construction administration services per week. And versus what we're actually spending on the job. So originally, we had budgeted about twenty-five to thirty hours per week for CA services. And that would be everything from answering RFIs, reviewing submittals, uh, attending site meetings, all that kinda stuff that normally happens in CA. That particular, uh, budget was actually exceeded. Uh, the actual hours that accounting is telling us is that we're spending, we had spent for the first twelve months between thirty-five and forty hours per week. And, and by the way, these are average. So some weeks we're spending a lot more and other weeks we're spending less. But if you take the entire, um, year, I think it's about twelve months of CA services and you do these averages, that's where the numbers come out. At least that's on Johnson. On Rockwell, a smaller school, we had budgeted between fifteen and twenty hours per week for, um, CA services. And on that job, we're actually spending what we had budgeted for Johnson, about twenty-five to thirty hours per week. So those hours add up pretty quickly and we do have, um, I, I think another five or six months of construction on each of the projects left. And right now, the firm is running at a deficit. So we're actually, um, in negative, uh, territory financially on both jobs. So every hour that we spend on the job, we're actually losing money. Uh, and we'd like to, um, get some compensation to, to continue to help, uh, progress the job and to get you to the finish line, um, this summer. I'd like to ask Joe maybe to, to talk about some of the areas where some of these overages, some of these additional hours were spent that are what we would consider not normal CA services. And maybe that can help explain, uh, why we're coming to you for this, uh, ad service. Joe, do you wanna start talking about some of the things that you went through?
I have, I have a, a few, few points that, um, as you know, that we have existing buildings that are really tough, um, and MEP coordination, as we've been discussing throughout this meeting, has taken a, a lot of time. We've assisted as much as we can. We've been involved with weekly meetings with the trade contractors since May, going over painstakingly in some cases where to, um, coordinate all the MEP trades, assisting in finding pathways with the electrical conduits is a, a good example of that. So that's, that's one example of, um, where we spent, um, additional time that's not normal to a, a normal CA, uh, project. We've also dealt with responses to unforeseen conditions. Examples of that are the bump outs at Rockwell, where we had to, um, provide sketches for, um, replacing the, the framing for that and then review of submittals and PCOs that are related to that. That's one example of that. Another example that's, um, been an issue with MEP coordination is existing conditions that, um, were unforeseen. Like, we just found out today that there's some, um, beam deflection at Johnson School that is, uh, two inches in deflection that wasn't, um, in the original documents that we had seen and, um, in the areas that we had taken measurements of the beams. So there was a, a two-inch difference, so that's something that we had to deal with. And then there's also been changes in documentation due to phasing issues. An example of that is the, the Rockwell windows, um, being split into, uh, two separate pieces and issuing sketches and dealing with that. So those, those are some of the, the things that we've been seeing over the past year.
So I, I, I think part of this is just the nature of this particular building, um, age and type. And some of the stuff, you know, we anticipated in our original proposal to the town for these two projects, but some of these things would be virtually impossible to anticipate. So the request for services basically is to extend, uh, what in essence is the expenditure per month, uh, to the end of the job. Now, we're hoping that we don't spend that, but based on what we've been seeing, even in the last few, few weeks, we're seeing, you know, a steady, uh, demand on our time and a steady demand on our resources that we think are gonna continue right to the end of the job. I don't see any letting up of that. I mean, we're really hoping that, um, the construction team can complete the project earlier. The fact is that, uh, without children in the building, um, that'll allow them to attack the building, uh, from all sides and not have to work, uh, in between and around children and, and faculty. So that should help the overall, uh, schedule of construction. But we're anticipating, when we wrote this, that it would be a normal, uh, course of business and this would extend to the end of the, of the contract term. So that in essence is, is what we're asking for. I hope you guys could consider, um, an extension of our contract and allowing us to staff it properly and to continue, um, assisting, uh, Rizzo and the trade contractors to get this project done.
Is it, is there, do you have a cost?
I think, John, I.
I, I have, I have the two costs, if you need me to tell you what they are.
Yeah, I think we, yeah, we'd like to know.
Yeah, I, I don't have those, I don't have those letters in front of me, John, I apologize.
So I have the letters and I can tell you, they were sent out as part of the documents, um, that Carolyn forwarded to us. So for Rockwell, I believe the amount, and, and so what I need to ask first is, is this an amount through the end of the project? Joe or Joe?
Yes, it would be. I'm sorry, I was muted, apologize. Yes.
That's okay.
Yeah, this, this, this is it.
Okay, so this would be an amount, um, to take us through to the end of the project, which theoretically is December. And so for Rockwell, it's a hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars. And for Johnson, it is a hundred and eighty-four thousand, eight hundred dollars.
Is it reimbursable by the state?
That's a good question.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, it should be, yep.
So Carolyn is saying it is, um, so I know there's gonna be lots of questions on this. And I think we should ask some if there's other, um, information that we need to gather to be able to make this decision. I feel like, um, I don't feel in a place, even though I, I read through everything and understand, um, where we're coming from, especially with unforeseen conditions. I think unforeseen conditions times a lot. That's understandable, yet I think, uh, we need, we may need to have ponder this and, um, maybe gather some more information together. So if anybody else has either questions or, um, information that you may want to get together before our next meeting, so we can, and talk about this, um, please let us know, so we can gather all this.
I just, I wanna make one comment. I, I understand the challenges, we knew this. We did two schools at the same time. We knew it was a tall task, but we did it because of economy, okay? But I think these are, there's a lot of people on this project that are running into this. This is the first person that came forward, Joe, at Perkins Eastman, about the cost and some of the stuff that's been involved in the project. So we have to keep that in mind.
These letters say for, um, through August, correct?
I think we mean to the end of the job.
Well, it says till August.
I, I don't have the letter in front of me, but whenever the end of the job is, that's, that's what these letters are meant to address. It's not our intent to come back to the committee or to the town. And it's, it's our intent to, to finish out the jobs and be, be successful when we finish them out.
And I do think part of, part of it should have a, a contingency on it, that it's reimbursed from the state, you know, anything that we agreed to.
Well, you know, obviously, we don't control what the state approves or does, doesn't approve. That, that's holy.
You could agree to change the price if we don't get reimbursement.
You might not know that for many months after the job is done. So I, I have one other suggestion that I wanna, I would like, um, Perkins Eastman to consider including, or actually, it's more than a suggestion. I would like to, to ask the commission to require this. What, what they're asking for in these letters is an allocation of additional funds. Um, I think going forward, we would like to see on their invoices and accounting of how many hours were spent in any given monthly, uh, period that an invoice covers. I'd like to know, um, what the hours were spent on. When STV provides an invoice, sometimes we have three or four pages of backup saying what we've done with every hour, uh, with every person, with every hour, uh, you know, on what tasks were we working going forward. And, um, I'd like to, I'd like to request that we get that kind of backup documentation as well from the design team, um, if we're gonna allocate additional funds.
I, I agree with you, John. Also, I have a question as far as you're saying, Joe, you were saying that you're running a negative now. What, uh, what's your projections right now? Is that, does, so the one eighty-four and the one twenty-three, does that pick up the negative that we have now or is that, uh, you know, where are we on that globally?
Well, I can tell you, we ate the first negative month, so that's not part of this request. So moving forward, every month that goes by, we are in the negative. I think it's like fifteen thousand and one and, I, again, I don't have the exact numbers in front of me and it's getting pretty late, but, um, pretty much the burn rate that we've been experiencing is what we're, what we're in the hole every month.
Okay. I'm just trying to get an understanding, 'cause you're saying what, it's about ten hours a week extra that you need, right?
Correct. On top of, on top of what we spent the previous year, mhm.
So you, so if we have six months left, uh, you know, twenty-four, uh, you know, twenty-four weeks, two hundred and forty hours, is that, you know, is that what we're ballparking?
Yeah, I think, I think what we're saying is that, um, for Rockwell, we're gonna be between twenty-five and thirty hours per week. And then for Johnson, which is a bigger school, between thirty-five and forty hours per week. And again, that's a mixture of all different services, whether it be field services, whether it be RFIs, whether it be submittals, whether it be coordination, whether it be, you know, just addressing concerns that anybody has. whether it be submittals, whether it be coordination, whether it be, you know, just addressing concerns that anybody has about the project.
And, and would this doesn't include anything with, for FFNE, which is sort of a separate, that everything's separate?
Yeah, FFNE is totally separate, right? That you, that was a, that was an all-inclusive proposal that we wrote, I guess it was last year sometime.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So Geraldine, do you have any other input on this right now?
No, I, I just, I just, my only thought is that this should be run hourly and not as a percentage of those allocated fees against the remaining six or nine months of the project. Again, I'd like to see some documentation of what the hours are and how they're spent. And I think that we should just recognize that there might be a slight savings over the next couple of weeks because you're not coming out to the job site. So at least we've got some reworking, you know, remotely working to our advantage here a little bit. Which again, is why I'd like to see the, an accounting of the hours.
Yeah, what we could do is we could adjust these proposals to make them not to exceed and to bill on an hourly rate basis so that the town would only be charged or pay for services that are actually rendered, rather than a fixed amount spread over a number of months. And that way, and that way, and that way, the committee and the town can sort of track what's going on and get a really good feel for the services that are being rendered on, on each job.
That would be great.
I like that idea, Joe. I think that's good.
Yeah, I think, I think that would be good for you and it'd be good for us.
I think it would.
So the only other thing I'd like to say is, is in support of these additional services requests and that. And I think I relayed this to Nancy. I think that the, the fee that you got out of Perkins Eastman to start on the project is low. It was, was very competitive. I mean, the fact that they were charging you under 5% of the construction cost for each school, I think was, was competitive. You know, and I, I can understand why that was not enough to actually do the work on these kind of complex and renovated renovation projects. I, I did a little, you know, calculation and still even with, even if we expend all of these additional services requests, the fee at Rockwell would still be under 5% of the cost of construction. And the fee at Johnson would be about 5.3%. So I think you're still getting a reasonable amount of service from your architects, even for the increased cost.
Geraldine, Geraldine, if you want us to increase our fees further, we, we can do that if you want. I just, I don't want the committee to feel that they're not getting a fair price.
That's why I want to see every one of those hours accounted.
So, so thank you for that and to put to Geraldine, it adds a little bit more for us to consider and looking at making a decision like this. And so if we're going to make this decision, obviously not tonight, I, I believe we would need this in some sort of form of a proposal. Something along the lines of what Joe, you said, and Geraldine and Roy had a little input on it too. As to how, you know, how this is going to be, how this will be done. Because if we, you know, once we vote on it, it's going to need to be, obviously go through a whole change order process. And, or, or a change to your, to your contract, actually.
Yeah, we realize that, but is there any way that we could expedite that process? Since, as I mentioned, we are in a negative cash situation. And I'd like to, I'd like to be able to go back to my partners and let them know that there's an intention to change this proposal, to make it an hourly, not to exceed and to continue providing services. Is that something that we could sort of figure out how to do tonight?
So what we would, our next meeting is, our next meeting is a regular meeting, which is April 14th. I can't say that we could do something tonight because we don't have anything specific to vote on. So if, unless anybody else has an idea of how we would vote on it tonight. It's our intent to do what we need to do, obviously. If anybody else has some input on how, how to expedite, please jump right in.
We, we got to get something drawn up and maybe have a special meeting and talk about it. Can't ma, can't make the decision tonight.
Understood, John.
Joe, just on a kind of a housekeeping basis, the, the latest invoice that you've provided to the town for services through February 29th, I think brings you up to 71% of construction administration fee. That invoice is going to be considered on April 14th. My guess is that your next invoice through the end of March 31st, today, will be presented in two or three weeks and it will be, take you to 100% of construction and administration. So even if, in my mind, even if we wait the two weeks to have a formal approval of this proposal, I don't see that you're really going to be out any cash flow yet. And I would recommend that we see a, a formal proposal with, you know, with the, with the fees and the hourly rates laid out and exactly what, what services we're, we're, we're going to be engaging you for going forward, with all the disclaimers and a place for the first selectmen to sign, I think, before we actually ask the commission to act on this.
What we'll do is we'll modify the proposal letters to reflect a nice discussion. And we'll get that back to you, Geraldine, so you can distribute it to the building committee in a timely manner. And then we'll circle back again. Meanwhile, we'll continue to provide our normal services as we have been. We don't intend to slow down or to stumble any of the, of the processes. And, you know, because obviously we have to keep this going and we have to complete these projects. But I think what we'll do is we'll just revise the proposals, get them back to you, make sure that you're okay with them. And then we can distribute them to everybody.
Perfect.
Geraldine.
Good.
I suppose, yeah, is another option that it be as an amendment to the original contract so that all the terms and conditions of the original contract buy?
Yes, that's essentially what this would be. They're going to, they'll lay out just the details of this additional work and additional fee. And it will reference their existing contract, general conditions, you know, everything that was in their original contract.
Correct, because there's no reason to be making sure all of that verbiage is duplicated.
Exactly.
Okay, very good.
So it sounds like we have a plan.
Yes, thank you very much. Appreciate your consideration on this.
Okay, I think Richie, you have a question. Rich is talking and he's not unmuted. You, you gotta unmute, you have to unmute yourself, Rich.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
I, I think you need also to run by the town attorney about changing the contract. You might want to get information, you know, while you're checking out all the other stuff.
So as soon as Perkins Eastman provides us with that formal contract amendment proposal, whatever we're going to call it, we'll circulate it to Marty as well for, with the original contract, make sure that he has a copy of it so that he can review concurrently, excuse me, with everyone else reviewing it prior to the April 14th meeting.
Okay, thank you, Gerald.
Yep. So the only thing left on the agenda are invoices. Nancy, how do you want to handle this? Do you want to read them off? Do you want me to put them up on the screen? How do you want to?
I, do people want to see them? I mean, I have them in front of me so I can do each one, I can read each one. I just need a little-
We don't need to, we don't need to see them. I think you just, whoever the vendor is in the dollar amount.
Okay, so I'll start doing that. If you need to see something, because it, like this was all part of the stuff that went out. If you need to see something, let me know and I will have Geraldine put it up.
And if I could just preface it, all of these invoices that we are considering tonight are for furniture deliveries and installations made at Johnson School. So these were, these were all, these furniture deliveries happened sort of at the last month, the last week of February and a little bit into March. So this, this equipment has been in your possession for a little while now.
Geraldine, is there anything you need me for? Otherwise I'm going to sign off.
Nope, I think we're good.
Okay, thank you, everyone. Have a good night.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, so I'm going to start with, I'm just going in order of what I have. So Hertz Furniture, make a motion that we approve the invoice from Hertz Furniture for Johnson School in the amount of, and Geraldine, correct me if the amounts aren't right.
Yep.
So the amount for that one is $1,790.03.
Yes.
I need a second.
John, I'll give you a second.
Okay, and all in favor? Aye?
Aye. Aye. Aye.
Does anybody oppose? Good, that one's done. The next one is Insalco. That's a lot. Is it a whole bunch of pages, Geraldine?
Yes, it is.
So it's like five pages. So Insalco, and I make a motion, we approve invoice number 8810 for Insalco for Johnson School in the amount of $44,943.55.
Correct.
I second it.
And all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
So that's done. And there's, there's a bunch of other pages with the Insalco with like scribbling on it. Is that just-
Yeah, that was just all of our accounting. So just to kind of recap, when these invoices came in, we matched them against both the shipping manifests and actual counts onsite to make sure that you received everything that they were billing you for. And that's what that additional information was, just part of the calculation of what was there and where it was.
Okay, so that one's done. And then, what's the original? I have an invoice from Lake Shore. So I make a motion that we approve invoice for Lake Shore for Rockwell School in the amount of $798.56. Any second? So Dino, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Done, okay. The next one I have is Red Thread. That looks like a bunch of pages also, I think.
Very many, seven. Yep, it's at the end of the seventh page.
Okay, so I make a motion that we approve the invoice for Red Thread. Doesn't have an invoice number, or it does, 819493 for Johnson School in the amount of $94,169.03.
Yep.
I need a second. All right, Dino, seconds. Any questions? All in favor? Aye. Oppose. Everybody's good. Done. Next one, Robert H. Lord Company. And that's what, two pages?
Yes.
Okay, make a motion, we approve the invoice from Robert H. Lord Company, invoice number 33804 for Rockwell School in the amount of $27,807.19. Need a second?
I'll second that.
Bob seconds. Any questions? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
I oppose.
Hey Nancy, actually I have one question about that.
Sure.
Does this include all the furniture that's on hold right now? You, you said that the delivery was-
Oh, yeah, no, that was right. This is an invoice for Johnson. The delivery that did not happen was for Rockwell and it was from Insalco.
Oh, okay, great.
Right, so this is, yeah, this is for Lord for Rockwell. The Insalco one was for Johnson, I think.
Oh, Lord for Rockwell?
Yes.
Yes. That's correct.
So are we good or is that? Okay.
Yes.
Okay. So this is Lord for Rockwell in the amount of, that I read, $27,807.19? So we got a second? Okay, any questions, any more questions? Bob had a question.
No, I won't say.
Okay, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Done. Next one, WB Mason. And this is for-
Also Rockwell.
Yes, I see Rockwell. So I make a motion, we approve the invoice from WB Mason for Rockwell School, invoice number 208307787 in the amount of $15,508.03. Need a second?
Second.
Did you look at the math on that thing?
What's that?
Why is it 15,000? What am I missing? Oh, I see it, sorry.
Yeah, there's a second page.
Yep, got it.
Okay, got it? Okay, anybody else have questions on that one? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Oh, any opposed or good? And the next one is Connecticut Communications. And there's two pages of that. So I make a motion that we approve the invoice from Connecticut Communications, invoice number 17666TP for Rockwell School in the amount of $1,440.03. Need a second?
I'll second that.
Bob seconds. Any questions?
I'll just interject that this is for installation of phone, phone lines at Rockwell by Connecticut Communications.
Okay, and that's part of FFNE?
It's part of the technology part of, yes, FFNE. It'll be, it'll be booked against the technology line item.
Okay. Okay, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Anybody oppose? Good. And then the other two that I have here are those quotations from E+. We don't really need to do anything with those because we already did.
Correct, those, you'll get an invoice after those power cords are delivered.
But we don't need to, but we don't need to sign them or anything and do anything with approvals. All right, so that's all I have. Were there any others?
Nancy, I have something.
Can I just, before you do that, Bob, can I just ask Kathy? I have the originals of a bunch of those invoices. Do you need those? Should I be, should I somehow get them to you or do you need the originals?
I mean, the finance likes the originals. The only original I have is the Insalco one.
Yeah, so is, but I mean, is-
He's assigned to expedite them, you know, we need them like right away. That's the issue.
What is, but if Nancy signs a copy, I mean, is payment going to be processed?
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, they'll just do it because under the circumstances, I'll just tell them this is what you got.
Okay, then I won't worry about trying to deliver originals, just-
Yeah, I'll, I'll talk to them tomorrow. If there's an issue, I'll let you know. But otherwise, we'll just go forward with copies.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, so that's pretty much it for the school projects.
Nancy?
Yep.
Can you hear me? I, I have one thing that I've been wanting to bring up. They're getting a lot of work done so far at both schools. I think it's time we start maybe a subcommittee to track all the punch list items to get a better handle on it. Just because I know the horror story I was faced with with the high school and I, I kind of don't want that to happen here. So I'd like to at least raise that thought and maybe see what you think or the committee thinks.
So you're, you're saying that you might want to put subcommittee together now to start looking at those supposedly finished areas to see if there's missing items or things that need to be tracked as far as getting them done? Especially if we're expecting, let's say we did expect students to come back pretty quickly. Those things would need to be done sooner rather than later.
Well, not, not just that, but I think it's start, I think it's time to start actually thinking towards the punch list. Because a lot of work is getting done. And I just don't want to get, you know, too far into it and then we're tracing back little items.
Right, right.
I don't know, I just posed a thought and you can go with it any direction you want. But it was just something that, that I know fell apart on me during the high school project. And I, and I don't want to see it fall apart here.
So we have a punch list from Perkins Eastman's walkthrough for the classroom edition at Johnson because they were able to get out there and do that when that work was completed. We're waiting for them to come out and punch list this first phase of Rockwell, which is in a position, you know, which is in a shape- is in a position, you know, which is in a shape that they could punch list. I think, I think it may be a good idea to have a smaller group of people to review that punch list and then to also keep track with me, obviously, of when those items are, are corrected or remediated or whatever.
Yeah, just wait here, it's no surprise that it's a committee. I know we, I know we talk about it on Thursdays, but I just, you know, the rest of the guys are on the table and ladies. I, I just don't want to see them, you know, lose track of it.
True. Well, I think that we should, we should definitely think about it, Bob, and, you know, I think we could get you and unless you don't want to do it and.
That's fine, that's fine. I, I volunteer.
Yeah, one or two other people, three at the most, and that, because we have to make sure we don't have a quorum at any, at any one time. So let's consider it and maybe we can put something together, you know, think about it for our next meeting. Maybe we could say who's, who's going to be willing to, to work on it.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
I think it's something good that we're going to want to track so that, like you said, it doesn't get away from us.
Correct.
So our next regularly scheduled meeting will be in two weeks, which is the 14th. I don't see a need for a special meeting in between. I think during the next two weeks, we're going to be getting a lot of information together to help us make some decisions. And hopefully in the next two weeks, we will also have better information as to whether, you know, we can give the team a go ahead to just have at it at both schools and get everything done. Does anybody have any other input or anything they need before we finish up this section of the, of the process? Because I'm going to need, make sure that, because there's some people that I'm not here on, and some people that I can't hear. So we're going to make, have to make sure for the next meeting that we, everybody's here and can be heard because I know you're going to have questions, especially if we're going to look at making some approvals of change orders. Anybody have anything, any questions for Geraldine, Ken, Jim, Joe, Joe? Any, any questions for any of them before they all sign off?
I'm good.
I'm good.
No problem.
I'm good.
Anybody from the team have anything they need from us before you sign off?
No, I just want to congratulate you guys being able to have this meeting by Zoom. I know it's difficult to hear and to see and to make motions and I do thank you for, for having that.
Thank you, Joe. And I, I got to tell everybody, we did this two weeks ago with a joint meeting for, with BOA to, to get that second phase FFNE package put together. But this is actually the first town public meeting that's being held this way. So I know it's going to be a bit of the, you know, it's kind of how it's going to be for the future for a little bit. And so hopefully you'll all learn some more and I'll learn some more and we can keep going this way and keep things moving along. It'll be interesting.
Sounds good.
Yeah, our next meeting will be a regular meeting. We'll probably have public input and it'll be interesting to see if we do get some public input.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Going to sign off now. Thank you. Have a good night, everybody.
Public site people, stick around. Public site guys, stick around.
Good night, everybody.
Nancy, I'm going to give you another five minutes and then I go on overtime.
All right, so I think school people are all gone. I just want to give you a little quick update on just two other things. For, and I, again, I, I'm going to ask very specific people. So I've heard from Rich, I've heard from Roy, I've heard from Dino, I've heard from, and that's all. I haven't heard anything from Gil or John Menti. Or Dave Olson, whose name was up there at first and then he was gone. So I don't know if you guys are still there, your names are still there, but I'm not hearing anything from any of you.
Nancy, I had a problem too. I couldn't get it on mute with the computer, so.
Yeah, well, I, I'm going to, I can email, for those of you who are still there and listening, I can send out an email with some info and maybe even do a few little trials.
Yeah.
You know, Roy, we're able to, we're able, yeah, we're able to hear you. We can't see you. This is okay.
No, I, I just went, I went over to the phone and I, and I don't know whether it's just a, a fluke with the iPad. I might, I might go on the computer the next time I do that because typically the computer works a little better than my iPad for that type of stuff.
Can tell you, probably for Gil and John Menti, the fact that there's no microphone in front of them at all.
Yeah.
Probably means that they're not, they don't have a camera or a microphone.
Yeah.
So they're able to hear it and watch it.
But they can't. Right.
You can always call in, just so you guys know, you can always call in with the phone and listen to it and be able to respond by the phone. You just have to mute it so that you don't have a double feedback from, you know, having it play in two areas. Just bring it out.
So I am going to send out an email with some, hopefully more information and if you need to practice a little, we'll do that too. Because I think the next meeting, if we're going to be discussing those big change orders, I'm going to want input from everybody. All right, so just a quick update with the police station. I had met with Chris Baldwin back at the beginning of March. I just kind of walked into his office and said, you know, most of the stuff at the police station is done. What do we have to do to get a change order? And then we, or CO, not a change order, but a certificate of occupancy, a CO. So we had a little bit of a, a discussion. He was trying to remember whether the permit was issued in two parts, one for the firing range, one for the main building. He was going to start doing some research and check his lists of things that he had as outstanding for himself, for Tom Galliford and for health or for zoning. And then all the closures started, et cetera, et cetera. And he was not only overwhelmed by school projects, but now he's in the process as every office in this building are revamping on how they approach things, how they do things, how they can continue to get their work done. So he emailed me a couple days ago and said it might be a couple of weeks before he can get back looking into that. So, but it's on his radar. The other part is we have to think about, and I have to be in contact with Downs, it's we're moving into March. I've already had an email from Pugner about what does he want to, what do we want to do about getting the walkthrough done? And I don't know how, and that, the email from Pugner was before closure started too. I have no idea how that's going to happen if, you know, I know construction's going on and people are supposed to maintain safe distances, et cetera, et cetera. So we'll have to see how that's going to work. I'll let, I'll keep you posted on what I hear. Any input on that?
Yeah. Yeah, Nancy, I appreciate that. By the same token though, I think we have to be very sensitive with the health concerns with, you know, with, with everyone, the police department and the contractors that would go out there even for testing and inspecting. So I'm, I'm a little bit concerned with pushing it too hard at this point.
Yeah, I wasn't wanting to push it. I was more like wanting to check in with Downs and say.
Yep.
What do you think? So get some info together.
Yeah. Because I, I personally wouldn't recommend we do anything, let anyone out there. I know Pugner had wanted to get a lot of this stuff, you know, moving right away, but, you know, my personal feeling is, is I think we should just let things ride for at least the next month. I'm, I'm just, I'm very concerned about things.
Yeah, I understand. I understand. Yeah, and, you know, Pugner has kind of been, I know they, the police station is not necessarily on a lockdown or whatever, but I think they're trying to keep the public out by appointment only, just like this building. So they're trying to, to keep things a little more closed there, which is understandable. So we'll see.
Right.
I did, I did email Steve back today and let him know about my conversation with Chris. And I know that the building inspector is not doing home inspections. They're not going to go into a person's home and do inspections right now. They're going to have to wait.
Right.
They do inspections of some commercial sites when Chris said he did one recently where no one was in the building. He went in on his own, he did his inspection, he came back out. So we're going to have to see how all of this goes before we can go any further with it. So I do have one thing. I actually have a, an invoice from Bray. So Bray was the folks that Roy got in there to do the wiring and such for the blinds and the blinds are operational and they're all ecstatic about it. So I, I would like to approve this so I can get up to finance. So I'm going to make.
Make a motion to approve it, so.
And I'll second it. The amount is $16,75, or $1,675.
Yeah, that's better.
So I'm the second and all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And that's done too. So we'll get that up to finance, uh, finance.
Hey, hey Nancy, or, or maybe Kathy. Hey, I had gotten a call, it was probably a week and a half ago regarding payment of the blinds. It was, it was about $10,000 and I don't know if that actually, I, I know the bill was submitted, but I'm not too sure if it got to the right spot. And maybe Kathy, if you could check that and if not, give me a holler tomorrow. I can talk to you tomorrow and just make sure.
Yeah, I would have given it to Nancy or whatever if I had gotten it, so.
Is that right? Okay, okay, then let me, let me take a look through tomorrow, Kathy, okay?
Okay.
See, I don't know if they, I'm, I don't know if they sent it direct, you know, to finance or whatever. I'm not too sure. So let me at least get, pull the bill. I'll give you a call with that, okay? It's, it was, it was, that was in dollars, I think.
Yeah, you can just mail it to me too and then I can, I'll just search it, but sometimes the finance gets something and they don't know, have any idea what it's for, they don't do it.
Yeah, I apologize. They, they called me last week and then I, then I forgot to give you a call on it just to check. But I'm, I saw it and, and, you know, I might have forgotten it myself, so I apologize on that. Let me see if I can talk to you tomorrow, though.
All right, yeah, and if, you know, if it, if it was something we approved, it would have gone up to finance and I don't remember doing the approval of it. It would have been in our minutes.
Okay, okay, let me, let me take a look because it was 10,000, whatever we had talked about, you know, on the original approval on the thing.
Great. And the only other thing is the, it would be, it would be great to have nobody in the building and have the GP room or the GP lobby being ripped apart, but unfortunately we can't. Marty had reviewed the RFP and had a whole list of things that he wanted us to check into that were more like inconsistencies in language and et cetera. So we have to work on that. Wasn't at the top of my list recently, but I want to try to get back into it. And I think that's about it. Does anybody have anything else?
No.
All right.
Thank you all. Be safe.
Yeah.
I'm going to make a motion to adjourn. John's going to wave and say second. All in favor?
Aye.
Good.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Thanks a lot.
Thank you. I'll be in touch.
Good seeing you.
Stay healthy.
Yep.
Talk to you soon, guys. Bye-bye.
Bye.
So Steve was doubled in here. Mouse over that. Where, are there two different?
Okay, that's the, that's the original meeting, you know.
Right, so end the meeting. There's a thing to do that. There you go.